All regular meetings go to the committee for the stand for the implications of the case today.
That's great. We come today thanking you for our city. We thank you for the many accomplishments that we've been enjoying in recent days. And we ask for your guidance and direction for the challenges we face and the decisions we strive to make for the betterment of our city. Bless this board of mayor and commissioners, our city manager, our staff and employees, and our citizens. Bless those that attend us today. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most received filed agenda. All favor. Most received filed amendments for a regular meeting April 25th, 2019. Any discussion on those? All favor. Carried through reports, commissioners.
Just want to welcome everybody on this new meeting. We, some of us went to the Northeast Kentucky Small Business Awards this morning. Many of our businesses here in our area and our city were well represented and won awards. And I want to congratulate them. I also want to invite the commission. I got a call from Kelly Heistrom from the high school. And she, if you remember, a couple weeks ago, she had the food truck project. And she would like us to come out for ribbon cutting on the 24th at 1:30. That's a day after graduation. On the 24th at 1:30, they're going to have a ribbon cutting and kind of a ceremony to kick that off for, to feed the hungry during the summer months. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Commissioner. Harvey, can you make sure you just note on that so we don't forget that? Anybody else?
If you didn't know, this was National Tourism Week. Sue Nellie, who's the executive director of the Ashland Wood County Tourism, and her staff do a great job of promoting our area. A big thank you to Sue and her staff.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I think we have a group of students with us today from Rose Hill. Am I right? Do you want me to try to keep you as close as I can? Or just recognize you until you get back to class? No? Are you going to tour some offices here, I think, and see about our city government? Any of you that'd like to stand up, tell us a little bit about why you're doing this? I won't make it. I thought maybe somebody might want to say something. No? But you are here to kind of tour some offices, learn a little bit more about the actual city government. Well, we're glad you're here and we welcome you and appreciate it. And I'm confident everyone will be very receptive to talk to you, unless we get out here quick enough and there's still lunch for them behind anybody. So thanks for being here. Glad to come back. Come back anytime. Okay. I would like, at this point, to read a proclamation. It's National Police Week, and we have a few of our officers here. And I would like you all to come up front. Major Sexton, if you would come out too. I hope you didn't put the word at all of you over here right now, especially around the banks and everything. You've heard me many times, you come to very many of our meetings at all, that public safety is the number one thing that we have to offer our citizens. And for small town America like Ashland, we have the finest. We have the finest fire department, firefighters groups that any community, I don't really care what size. And I say the same thing for our people in blue. Everybody's not going to stop you all the time and tell you what a great job you've done, but trust me, I think they've commented to us many times of how safe our community is, and it's safer now than ever before. We can't, we can't thank you enough for the job you're doing in the city, in the area, notwithstanding the major drug arrests and drug busts that you're making. Everyone is touched by that in some way. And that's probably, when we see it on the front page, it makes all of us feel better in our community about the risk it takes and about the reverberating positive effect of stopping drugs coming into our community. So at least we pull you up here today, we can emphasize our thanks to you on behalf of all our citizens. I'm eternally proud of my police department, and I want you to know that. To recognize National Police Week 2019 in honor of the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Ashland Police Department. Whereas there have been 60,211 assaults against law enforcement officers from 2017 resulting in approximately 17,476 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in line of duty, including six members of the Ashland Police Department. Whereas those names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 371 new names and fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 158 officers killed in 2018 and 213 officers killed in the previous year. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 31st Annual Candlelight Ditch on the evening of May 13th, 2019. And whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 12th, 18, note some events will take place before as this designation. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all law enforcement officers and their families, and US flags should be flown half staffed. Therefore, be it resolved that Ashland, Kentucky Board of City Commissioners formally designate May 12th, 18, Police Week in Ashland, Kentucky, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. I thank you and your families for allowing me to be our safest group that you've ever had in the small town America, or any city for that matter. Thank you all. And thank you to your mayor. Thank you, guys. Now, we have a speech that I want to give. Thank you all.
Mayor, as you're sitting down, I'll just remind the commission and the public that Monday, May 13th, the Ashland Avenue Lodge Number 3 holds their memorial service at 7 o'clock at Cross Temple Church. It's a great service. We haven't been, and I'm actually...
Thank you. Thanks again, police officers. Okay, city manager?
Yes, sir.
Can't make anything up?
I did ride along with Chief Kelly last night.
It's been busy. There's a lot you don't want to tell us, I think. But tell us about your ride with the chief.
It was remarkable to have the opportunity to ride along with the Ashland Police Department last night, specifically Chief Todd Kelly. What these folks go through out in the field, even on something as routine to them as a traffic stop, is, makes your heart race as a citizen when you pull up on a car and you don't know who's in there. And our officers get out every time and walk up with confidence, not knowing what they're going to face when that door opens. I commend them for having the courage to do something. It's what you probably think is trivial as that. I'm telling you, it made my heart race every time I did it last night. You know, five arrests in four hours out in the field last night. I'm so impressed with what we, what our officers do and how professional they handle things when they're in the field. So thank you all for allowing me to ride along last night.
It's a little bit different than basically walking up on you the last time in your own car, I'm sure.
Yes.
But you know, I mentioned this before, you know, how many professionals are there where, you know, you get up and go, and you've got to strap a gun on, which means that your potential for running into someone else that has a gun on them is an everyday thing. So I think the families are to be commended for a police officer and for allowing him to even serve in that capacity every day. You know, none of us are promised a tomorrow or the next 10 minutes for that matter. But when you have a profession that is against the bad guy on a regular basis, a routine basis, and you leave the house each day armed, then it's an added dimension to making a living for your family. So my best to all your families, for sure. Proud of all of you. Okay, this part of our meeting is public participation. If you have an item that you'd like to bring before our commission, we would ask you to give your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we'll, we have a complaint form system that we can provide to you, and we'll try to do the best we can to respond to whatever you bring before us. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Bill Harvey. I live at 2221 Pollard Road. My family's been residents there for over 40 years. My comments is dealing with recycling, a recycling program. And I admit that my only knowledge comes from the Ashland Daily newspaper. So please bear with me if I'm way out of line. My concerns is that we may be taking an approach that is less systematic and doesn't address the whole issues of recyclables in our community. What I get from the newspaper, you know, we're looking at residents that use the city service. You know, we're not looking at other complexes, apartments, city-owned, city-managed, probably home, probably managed. And, you know, we're not looking at businesses. I would just suggest that we take a complete systematic approach to it, rather than adopt something piecemeal and maybe regret it later. And it's also, you know, fairly well-known that recycling programs cost money. They certainly don't make money. And it's evident throughout our country that small cities, even though they have had recycling programs for a number of years, you know, are really falling on some hard times and having to reconsider their approach. So I think part of our approach would be to look at cities that are comparable to the demographics of our city, learn from their mistakes and their successes, you know, before we sally forth on our own. It might add a little bit of time to it, but I think in the long term, you know, that will be better for the community as a whole. And speaking of, you know, waste services, our garbologists, as they refer to themselves, you know, they're a real treat. Like I said, we've lived there for 40 years, and every week that they come through there, they hustle. There's no slow in them. They work together as a team. They're always harrowing. They're always cheerful. You know, they always greet me and my wife if we're out in the yard. I really appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. It is, our citizens fortunately, I think it's a good thing, they take for granted the level of public safety we provide. That, I mean, I think that is the highest compliment I could pay my police and fire is that people take it for granted. They know you're there, and they know you're protecting. Probably the number one service we get the most comments on is our sanitation service. And mine are just like yours. When I wasn't the mayor, they were the same way, and, you know, it just doesn't make any difference to them. I think from the supervisor all the way to everybody on those trucks there, they do an amazing job. Rarely do I ever hear any resident say, "How come they wouldn't take this?" I think if three of them can get it up, it's gone. And if it takes more than three, they may come back later today. But, I mean, it is an unbelievable service we offer, and I think all of us sometimes, in the space of Christmas time, we kind of see who actually takes the best care of their route people, you know, which I do about the year just odds and ends, or cash, or whatever. I know the plan is supposed to be that. Major, just give back your stuff. Don't throw any orders out on me. But people truly appreciate and respect the employees in that department. It's a tough department, and it's normally of entry level. You know, a lot of times, if you want to work for the city, well, actually, we have an opening in sanitation. That's the way you get in. And there have been policemen, firemen, supervisors alike, and they all started, which is not a bad thing at all. They've started in sanitation department. Many years I've served off and on, you know, I served with a commissioner who retired as a pretty good position in fire department. He worked for the city his whole career. He started sanitation department. Some of the guys that worked there don't want to leave the sanitation department. They enjoy it. They like it. They like how everybody treats them. And it is one of those jobs that nobody's looking over your shoulder all the time. If you're out there, it sprouts in the pudding. You get to pick it up, or you didn't, and somebody's going to call about it. So we're blessed with those kind of people. And we actually went to the kind of containers we have now that fit on the back of the truck that empty them on their behalf. For many years, we had so many disabilities with sanitation workers who, they actually hurt themselves trying to pick things up and lift things up. So that whole thing was done to help them. In the process, of course, it allowed residents to have a larger container, plus it's on rollers. And everybody kind of wins with that. But I know that our supervisors are here, and I want to make sure they do echo that to their sanitation people, that we had somebody that took the time to think up here. And you know, I'm sure many of you may want to respond in some fashion to you. I appreciate you coming. Appreciate you being here 40 years. But the truth of it is, we, you're exactly right. Everything you say is very accurate. Beginning with, paper's done a heck of a job on this. And just since I've been in office this time, we've talked about it enough that they've done several articles. And even before I took office, the commissions before me, they were still talking about it. It is complex. It isn't a simple deal. When you figure out that there isn't any money in it, it's kind of a, everybody's trying to do their part for our universe, you know, for our world, for Ashland, for Kentucky and all that, by recycling things for our posterity sake. A lot of times you can't, you're not really sure how much is even going to recycling and what gets dumped somewhere else. I'm not pointing finger at any company. I'm talking about nationwide, for that matter. But people who are very zealous about doing recycling, they deserve better from how it is eventually disposed of sometimes. But we all know from, we found out from investigations and all that even a great load of recycling doesn't make it to the recycling plant for whatever reason. More convenient, you know, we don't have time, yeah, mostly money. Mostly money. But we have thrashed it around, and Commissioner Goodbother again the other day, he kind of introduced it to us, a painful subject, which it is, because there isn't a simple solution to them. And we're hoping, and we're looking at it again, you know, the figures will change and the number of people that want to use it, but it's a very costly endeavor if it's done right. So people do have to take the brunt of that if you're going to do it. So your senior comments were very, very marked and pointed. I think we all agree with you for the most part on all of that. You bounce?
Mr. Harvey, I went to, out there to the Rumkey Open House the other day and toured the Rumkey landfill. 1,600 acres. It's very, very impressive. And I met with Steve Sargent, who's head of the all of recycling in Rumkey, from our provider. He invited me up to Cincinnati to their central location to where everything gets dumped and sorted and everything. And I planned to meet him up there this week and just get some information. He was an eye opener to me of what they service. This is, now that's the provider we go with. But I assure you that nobody be left out. I mean, if this comes to fruition, that nobody be left out. Everybody be offered something. But it is complex. But I met with two of the, three representatives last week from Rumkey, who's our provider. But I'll let you know, when I go up there, and he said it's quite a sight for how they recycle and how they sort and everything.
Thanks, Commissioner. I know your honor.
I wanted to also make a point. I've actually been on the trucks with our sanitation department.
I did it first.
Christmas Eve, and he's, I followed his lead.
I did first years ago.
Did you hang on the back of the truck?
On the back. They took no prisoners.
I would say they probably sped through the streets like they did with me, trying to throw me off. No, they were, they were great. But to your point about recycling, it sounds complex, maybe to implement, but the city of Russell has already started. And it took them less than, I'd say, six months to do it.
It's probably not a good comparative analysis of Russell, the city of Ashland. That's just the way I'm going to leave it, my feeling.
Well, what I will say is this, they also looked at other cities of comparable sizes to implement. And they allowed their third-party recycle and sanitation company to make the presentation and plan. They let the experts do it. And obviously, that company would not do it unless they were able to make something out of it. Now, they are charging a fee. I'm sure that's why they needed 200 to sign up to make sure they could cover their costs. So my challenge to our commission is we have this opportunity right now to look at it seriously and really seriously do this for the people that have asked for it for so long. We have a budget coming up in two weeks, and I challenge our city staff, Commissioner Good's hot on it, to get us the numbers we need to move forward so that this next year we can actually say we've started the program and not have a survey, and not have statistics. We know it works. We know that there are challenges in that industry. But I don't think it's doing anybody a favor by pushing this further down the road. But I do think we need to look at everything exactly like you said. Let's look at each city comparable size, Paducah, Kentucky. I called them and asked them how they did their program, very similar to our city. They have in-house sanitation. Our city manager actually called them and talked about what kind of trucks did they use? What did they do right? What did they do wrong? Just what you said. And one of the things they found out, they overestimated how many people would participate.
But antinodally, you know, I know some of the sites that have had the curbside recycling program before, they're going away from that and going to what we have now.
I appreciate that.
What I've learned through my many, many years of experience in the business world, that you could take any issue, and you're going to have pros, and you're going to have ups.
Absolutely.
So if you don't have your facts straight first, if you don't look at a systematic approach first, then you can't say we made a good choice or we made a bad choice.
I don't necessarily know that we need to get rid of the recycling center. I think you add that as a value, add a benefit to those that would like recycling at their residence.
This is where you need to look at a systematic approach.
Right.
Considering the whole ball of wax and much.
I couldn't agree with you more.
I totally agree. And I agree with keeping part of the center down there, but tonnage is the big thing. You know, tonnage is the big thing. And tonnage costs money. And $90 a ton is a lot more expensive than tonnage. And so that's what you're looking at. That's why we don't take glass down there, is because it weighs more. But this will be included in the curbside. So I was going to leave it at that. I guarantee you we'll see all the ins and outs of it before it's lost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Got to sit close this time, make sure we didn't close down before we had the opportunity to speak. Bernard O'Nan, 2720 Forest Avenue. A couple of things I want to speak about. First of all, I want to give you a definition. Con artist, a person adept at swindling by means of competence games, swindlers. A person adept at lying and cajoleery of live self-serving talk. Now, why do I talk about a con artist? Well, on June 14th, Outsmart the Con Artists, we're going to have the opportunity, AARP, FICO, Elder Abuse and Mound Treatment Council, Arlene Balfont, and Kentucky State Police and Social Security Administration will be having an event on June 14th, Flag Day, from 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon at Arlene Balfont Pavilion. The first 266 citizens that sign up for this will be provided lunch as well. We're going to talk about the issues of how to outsmart the con artists, fraud prevention and awareness. Now, I encourage commissioners, mayor, for y'all to attend. If you don't want to eat, don't sign up and register. If you do want to eat, make sure that you're registered, because Cap's catering will be catering there.
Marty?
We had a burger.
Exactly.
Count on Marty for lunch.
I'm going to leave flyers up here at the front for y'all to have. Please share this information. We've got about 100 folks already signed up for the event, and we're working with both Arlene Balfont AARP, the FICO Elder Abuse.
Would you mind sending that electronic way?
I will. I'll send it to all the commissioners and mayor as well. The second thing I want to talk about, you know, when I go out and run on the city streets, I get to do a lot of thinking. I'm like Forrest Gump, mowing grass and running. Those are the two things. I have solved world hunger. I have solved the Middle East crises. I've solved national debt and many other issues, including recycling, if y'all want my thoughts on that. One issue is sidewalks in the city of Ashland. And there's one area in particular in which there's a lot of people who use it as a thoroughfare. That's Woodland Avenue from Ashland Avenue down to, is it Ophie Road? Y'all know where I'm talking about? And we have what I call a schizophrenic sidewalk system near there. In fact, there's parts in which there's not sidewalks. I would encourage the city to take a look at that area. I've had many fellow runners talk to me about it. I drive through there all the time, and I know Officer Floyd uses that as a prime speed catch track location. I've called her twice.
You know for a fact on that?
I know for a fact on that. Does a great job. The sidewalks need to be on that area. And I know there are nice homes up and down through there, and there's apartment complexes up and down through there, but there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that goes up and down Woodland Avenue. The north side of Woodland Avenue actually has a three-inch water line that has, and I've been here 19 years, going on 20 years, has burst at least six or seven times. And that three-inch water line, if I'm not mistaken, is supposed to be replaced. I would encourage the city to look, and y'all may already be doing this, so if you are, there's no slight intended, I'm just giving you a suggestion. But look at the state money for new sidewalks through that area. I know there's grants, the transportation alternatives, TAP funds. Apply for those TAP funds, and maybe kill two birds with one stone. Replace your water line on the north side. Put you a sidewalk through there at the same time. And I know there's a beautiful house up there that has a beautiful tree, and maybe there's one section about 20 foot in which you don't have a sidewalk. Maybe just put gravel through there. You don't interrupt the person that has the nice dry and lean beautiful tree at the top of the hill. But maybe that surrounds you. So two things I'd like to talk to you about, and there they are.
Thanks, Harvey.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Anyone else? Appreciate you being here. Old business, I'm a man.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting amendment nine for city employees, amendment eight for the fire department unit, the city of Ashland Detective Medical Care Plan Summary Plan, adopted by ordinance 46, 2012, previously amended due to name change of the organ transplant policy provider.
Any discussion? All favor? Close lights, I'll sign on a D.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contractual services agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Taylor Sykes Kirk Williams Design Group LLC in the amount of $865,375 for the city of Ashland Department of Public Works.
Salute. Any discussion? All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Out of C.
An ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Taylor Sykes Kirk Williams Design Group LLC in the amount of $32,980 for the preparation of comprehensive plan with the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Any discussion? All favor? Close lights, I'll sign on D.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Dixon Engineering, Inc. for professional engineering services for the project administration and inspection services for the coating, painting, and repairing of a million gallon Summit Water Storage Tank in an amount not to exceed $67,522.65.
Salute. Any discussion? All favor? Close lights, I'll sign on I.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, amending the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended to include a smoking and tobacco use policy.
Any discussion?
The only thing I'm going to ask is how quickly can we have some place for the folks that previously were right up against the building? Will they have a place if they don't smoke that's covered?
I know that's something the city manager, Graysey, has been working on. I can get you an update on that by the end of the day.
Okay. That'd be great.
All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Out of E.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number one dated April 18, 2019, between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Summit Fence Company, Inc., increasing the contract amount of $6,050 for the installation of fencing gates and all pertinences for the new most important utility for the Department of Utilities.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Out of G.
An ordinance, a second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting by reference updated procurement regulations for the city of Ashland, Kentucky, May 2019, and repeating ordinance number 87, series of 1992, and all amendments thereto.
Salute. Any discussion? All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Any other old business? Consent agenda?
A resolution to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the board of city commissioners of May 9, 2019.
Salute.
Second.
Any questions?
Just a comment. Number seven. The absence of that sponsor is asking for any city fees to be waived. Sort of taking up stances, this commission, that we're not doing that correct?
Right.
Okay. So this doesn't read that we are waiving those fees, it just?
It just reads that there's a request, you know, of the sponsor. Right now, you'd just be approving the events take place at that time.
I would like to, your attention on number 10. We have a new position in the city, which is the utilities director, who will be over water and sewer both. And it was advertised a couple of different times, correct me, over the past six months? Yes, sir. At least six months, maybe more. There were a lot of advocates, and of which very few were deemed appropriate for our community and with their background, lack of certifications, or whatever the case may be. And the truth of the matter is, when I know all of you feel the same way I do, I was the same way in the school system as I am in the city. We all look at home first and look at home more thoroughly and provide learning experiences and on-the-job, you know, training and ability to get certifications in different ways. The position called for a four-year college degree, which, you know, also kind of limits that area when you go for applications. But also, the magnitude of this position is such that that was a necessary criteria, in my opinion. But we were able to actually find the best candidate, the top candidate, right here on our own staff, who has a number of years, not only in the city, but other cities, working with utilities. And he's been with us, I think, Susan, you know that, for 13 years? Mark, are you there yet? Am I wrong?
Almost 20.
Almost 20? Well, you know, you missed it.
Missed it.
And I've been assistant mayor for a couple of years here, a couple of years there. I'm worried about, almost 20 years. Loyal, dedicated, committed city employee, who actually was the final selection of the committee and city manager, and we're elated about that. If you'd set up, stand up Mark, like everyone, to see our newest employee in a new position of over water and sewer both, and we welcome you to that position, Mark. We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
I won't ask you to make a speech unless you want to.
No. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We're glad you're there. We're all here to support. Any other questions on any of the consent agendas? Just let me? Is there something?
All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Thank you. Okay. New business, I'm a man.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contribution and aid of construction agreement for the installation of underground service to new stoplights in the 1200 block of Winchester Avenue for the Streetscape Project in the amount of $449.59.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I've spoke to acting city manager about this this week, and I've got an answer this morning. We get a lot of questions from the public as to why things are the way they are. And one of the questions was, why are we still, why do we still have a pallet of bricks on our sidewalk that has been under construction for months? And the answer is, we found that we had an issue with electric. And because of that, we were, we've had to make some adjustments until we get final approval from the state, as they summarize it pretty well, pretty quickly. So with that being said, that's the reason why things have not pushed forward. We, I think, Commissioner Park, I both have talked about previously, we were hoping to be done with this project by now. I think the building behind us is going to get done before we get our sidewalks done. So, you know, I think, once again, we've got to be very mindful as a city that we look at every project, we're monitoring those projects, and we stay on time with those projects. It's critical for the cost, it's for our citizens, cost of the city. We have to do everything we can to stay on budget, preferably under budget, and on time. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Out of B.
First reading and adoption and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the FFY 2019 grant application to the Federal Transit Administration on behalf of the Ashland Bus System for operating costs, preventive maintenance, paratransit service, maintenance payroll, capital expenditures, and further authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the implementation of this grant.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Out of C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the program year 2019 action plan for a community development block grant to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and upon acceptance of said application from HUD, to execute on behalf of the city of Ashland, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, to enable the city to undertake these activities and/or any and all documents associated with the grants submitted.
Salute.
Quite a list of improvements throughout the community. The very best use of community development block grant funds. And, sir, we appreciate the time and effort it goes in to try to spread them out over a lot of the needs that we have.
All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Out of D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, accepting the proposal of ProSasher, Inc. to provide a human resources system for the city of Ashland in an effort to digitalize the current system for a once-time setup fee of $5,000 and a fee of $84 annually per employee for an approximate amount of $25,200, based on 300 employees for the Department of General Government Division of Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Out of B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed of conveyance between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Next Level Properties, Inc. regarding the acceptance of the donation of 3408 Central Avenue, East Ashland.
Any discussion? All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Out of M.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting revised job description for positions of bus driver and relief bus driver, adopting the job description for position of paratransit driver, all of Department of Finance Division of Mass Transit, and amending the authorized positions to reflect the changing grade of bus driver and relief bus driver, and the added position of paratransit driver of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Close lights, I'll sign. Any other new business?
Just wanted to ask that we consider moving forward in the future with any kind of code enforcement issues. Spring seems to be really tough on your department, and it's tough on us too, because we get a lot of calls, texts, emails, messages about condition of properties. And I just ask that maybe we spend some time working with you, develop a plan that would assist you all, and also give the city some remedy to make some final action on some properties that may be blighted for many, many years. Get them either off the tax rolls, back on the tax rolls, whatever we need to do to get you all some help to get some of these properties off the list.
I certainly appreciate that. And that's a discussion we've had with our legal department recently, too. And I think we'll have some regulations happening soon.
Great.
I was excited to see, of course, we'll get into this during the budget discussion, but I was excited to see in the budget that was crafted was some money put specifically toward that so we can move on these properties.
We are more than aware of most of the properties that need, should be demolished, demanded to be cleaned up, whatever. I probably turn in, because I'm here every day, three or four a day. And you guys send me pictures all the time, just because, well, you send them to friends. It's a very difficult situation, because this is America, and property, it's a property and belongs to a person and all that. And if we can locate the person, it's less of an issue. We usually get it worked out. Our biggest problem is, we probably have in the neighborhood, 40 to 60 properties right now that should be, for the majority of them, torn down. And the property either, if it's not a large enough lot under the new codes we're building, then what we normally do is split that property with the adjoining neighbors, and it does enhance their value, their positive, it probably goes up a miniscule amount. But at least now somebody's taking care of it and keeping the neighborhood from looking like a blighted area. And every community has this, and in small town like ours, they jump out at you. Every time you turn a corner, you go down a street, you have to be down a while, and you think, gosh, what happened here? This street always looks so good. But you have somebody die, and they have inheritors or not, which we have. You talk about a mixture of who owns or, we can't even tell sometimes who owns these properties. But you have absentee owners or absentee inheritors, they care less. They don't even want to fool with us, they live so far away, and so, but it's difficult. The process we have to go through to demolish a property, no matter how bad it looks. So what we end up doing is we contract rat cutting. We send some of our crew out sometimes to help at least make sure snakes and rats are the minimum in the area. And these commissioners are committed, just like I am. People call me, and I try to go out and look. I don't expect them to go through anything I don't want to go through. And I don't want to live next door to something like that. And I don't think any of my citizens should live next door to that without getting some kind of a scheduled relief. And Mr. Pullum has really been on this one with his staff to try to work with the people to help us find out who owns that property. It isn't always at the courthouse. It really isn't. And that's, now, we have Andrew Wheeler now on as an assistant city attorney, and tax delinquencies are going to be at the top of his list, along with helping us, which he's had a lot of experiences already in the private sector, going after absentee properties that nobody seems to know who owns or who cares about. And, you know, we need one of those here and there in the community to really cause the neighborhood to feel like they're neglected. So we've got, we have a good game plan and full support of this commission to go after these. And we're doing it little by little. We wish we could do it faster, but there's a legal process yet to follow. So many days, you cite them, you wait so many days. If we go clean it up, we put a lien against the property, we're probably not going to get it back anyway. But we do put a lien against property for everything we do there on it. It bothers all of us all the time, that we can't move quicker.
May I just to add a small comment to the conversation in terms of high grass and those sorts of things? Remind people to use the, how can we help let them to report those and track those as well?
Yeah, let us know.
I'm on one of those calls at least a couple of times a week. But I want to commend the code enforcement. They've got two inspectors and a manager, correct?
Yes, sir.
For the whole city. And, I mean, there's, there's just certain steps you have to go by. I want to commend you, Commissioner Perkins, for your post on Facebook about the steps that you go through in code enforcement, about citing people. And then they have so many days to respond. And then you finally put a lien on it. But, I mean, we can't go in there like the Gestapo again and just take immediate action and just say, you know, you're going to do this.
We want to do that.
You're going to do that.
Yeah, you do. It is America, so.
You're right, Commissioner. Thanks for those comments. Appreciate it. Anything else, guys? Okay, we're going to join executive session. It's going to be on potential contractor litigation. And that's the only thing that will be discussed in there. We will take no votes in closed session. If there is a vote on anything, it will be after we come out. Not sure I'll be back there. There is no more business today, so I won't hang around unnecessarily. But only contractor potential litigation to be discussed. But I will tell you, if you aren't here, we're going to recess this meeting. Not adjourn it, we'll recess it until Tuesday, the 21st, at 9:30 a.m., where we don't have to call a special meeting to go on in for a budget. So we'll recess this meeting to Tuesday, the 21st, at 9:30, so we can just go tie into our budget. We've all been working on the budget, and we'll, we may or may not have a first reading at that point, but there'll be a lot of discussion on it.
May I make a motion to do an executive session?
Yes, second. So we will be in executive session.
So, we will be in executive session. We returned at one forty-seven. Only contractor potential litigation will discuss. No actions taken. I motion to recess. I don't believe that, I don't think, I think I just recessed.
You can just recess the meeting till?
Till May twenty-first at nine-thirty AM. We recess.
Mayor, I'd like it on the record that I've just had my email checked, and, uh, the city website still has dot org as my email. I'm the only commissioner that has dot org.[1792.23]